Let the call to order the Town Adoptment Select Board meeting of March 25th, 2024. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing while we honor our veterans, both past and present from here and abroad. Thanks very much. Please be seated. This is an open meeting, which begins here in Room 304. The meeting is being recorded, but we, all members are present to vote, so all votes will be done on a hand-raised basis. We signed the warrant, and we're ready to move on. New business: introduction of our new Director of Inspection Services.
Yes, so Randall Basset is here. He's our, starting today, he's our new Director of Inspection Services. He comes here via the town of Fairhaven. He's a certified building official. He's got years of experience. He's gonna be, I believe, a good fit in town, but I'll have him introduce himself and tell you a little bit about himself.
Yes, hi, my name's Randy. Everyone just call me Randy, not that formal. I do live on the Cape, just as Sean does. I have three kids, wife, we've married 20 years. I'm heavily involved with hockey. My kids all play hockey, it's crazy. I'm pro-building, I wanna keep projects moving. I want things to move along smoothly, in the way that we want them as a town to grow, and everything will keep moving forward. That's my goal for us. I'm gonna hit the ground running, and let's go. You guys ready?
As long as you are.
Any comments, questions?
No, I'm glad you, I'm glad you're here. We were, Sean and I were on the committee that found you, and hired you, and I think we made a good fit.
Yes, everyone I've met's been great.
You're gonna do very well.
Yeah, thank you.
And if you need anything, come see us, we're here to help.
Alright, I appreciate it.
Thanks to Sean and Stanley for helping out and getting the job done. It wasn't easy, but you're here.
No, it wasn't easy.
Give you some time to get your feet under you downstairs, but I do know that there's a number of individuals who are hoping to meet with you on a more formal basis, to talk about how things have gone in the building department, with online permitting and questions that they might have. And so, you having experience with online permitting in another municipality may be helpful as well.
Absolutely.
But I anticipate that we'll probably pull the trigger on that meeting in a couple of weeks, just so that we're not too far into your, before you, before you step in it.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe, maybe about like, maybe a month from today, or something in that vicinity. What were you thinking?
I was thinking, just a couple of weeks, I don't want, I think, I mean, it takes, the clock's always ticking, so.
He's a fast learner.
Yeah.
Couple weeks.
We won't wait longer than that, though. We'll see how it's going, but, not longer than that.
Sounds good.
And we'll, we'll call for people, help with people from the community, and we'll get them in here to listen to what I have to say. We can decide at that point how we're gonna, how the board wants to administrate that process. Okay?
Sounds good.
Anybody else? Thanks so much for coming in.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Have a nice drive home.
Okay, next, on the appointment of the Youth Commission, Randall Alex Hirschman. Step forward, introduce yourself.
Greetings all. Alex Hirschman, resident 30-plus years, married 27 years, raised four kids, teacher at Bishop Stang Physics and Calculus, board member at City on a Hill up in Boston, Board of Trustees, Board of Burgo Basketball, and thank you all for your tremendous help in getting that wrapped up. I think that's about it. And looking forward to the opportunity to work with Jeremy and work with the community's youth beyond just being their teacher.
Awesome. Any questions from the board?
Move the appointment.
Second, by all means.
Any questions or comments?
None.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I hear none, unanimous. Thank you for your service.
You?
And become more important than ever. More important than ever.
Thank you in advance.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dolores.
Thank you all.
You'll receive a letter in the mail to get sworn in.
Great.
And on that committee, Krista Machado, she, her term expires in '24 on the Youth Commission. Is she gonna re-up?
We send out letters to everyone.
Oh, so, we don't know.
So, to everyone that's.
I wonder if Dolores can answer that, no?
That's gonna be up.
Maybe Dolores knows?
Dolores, do you know if Krista Machado is, her appointment is up this year? Is she gonna re-up?
She didn't tell me that she wasn't, so I'm assuming yes.
Okay. She would've gotten something in the mail, Sean said, so.
Well, we send those out in the spring, yeah.
Oh, they're not yet, oh, soon.
I will follow up with her. She didn't say that she was not, so I'm assuming yes.
Oh, good.
We are too. Okay, thanks. Ready, all set? Next, the appointment to the Dartmouth Pathways Committee, Andrew Langhauser. Please step forward, introduce yourself, and tell us your story, Andrew.
Good evening. My name's Andrew Langhauser. Lived in town since 2017, retired, two children, a grand, brand-new grandson. I've been working with the Pathways Committee for the last year. They've got a great mission in trying to bring the South Coast Bike Way through town. Unfortunately, they don't have a membership to have a quorum, so I've decided to step up and help them to push that project forward.
Beautiful.
Very nice.
Any questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions or comments before we vote? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I hear none. Thank you very much. Appreciate your service.
Thank you.
The family of services.
Correct.
Yep. We also, at this point, ready to move, keep moving. Historic Commission, we received a letter of resignation from James O'Day, which was effective immediately, sometimes last week, the week before.
Yes.
Move to accept the resignation.
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions before we vote? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, I hear none. Passes, and we send him a certificate, thanking him for his service. Next, Broadband Committee resignation, Saul Raposo Jr.
This one hurts.
Yeah, he's a good man.
Yeah, good time.
Move to, move to accept the resignation.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions?
Be tough to replace this guy.
Yeah.
Hey, great things to say about Mr. McDonald as well.
He did, yeah.
We'll do our best to keep moving. Okay, ready to vote?
Yeah.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I hear none. Send him the certificate. Mr. Saul, thank you so much for your service. Next, Community Preservation Committee resignation, Stuart McGregor. Received his note last week, effective immediately, and we read, we received a note from the Chair, Buddy Baker-Smith, eloquent about Stuart's service, and so much appreciated. He put a lot of time, effort, and his heart and soul into that, that group, and all the projects we've done, and all the, all the money we spent, Stuart was a major part of that, and he did a great job. Move on to Stuart.
Motion?
Motion to accept his resignation.
Second.
Second. Comments or questions? Let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I hear none, unanimous. We'll send Stuart a document. Stuart, thank you so much for your service, so much appreciated. Okay, moving along. Annual Town Election Warrant. The boss is here.
Madam Clerk.
Good evening. It feels like we just did this, right? I'm Sarah Haskell-Ruda, I'm the Town Clerk, and before you, tonight is the warrant for the annual town election being held on April 2nd. I'm looking for you to approve the warrant and sign it for me, so we can get it posted tomorrow.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Approve and accept. Any questions on the motion?
Vote in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I hear none, unanimous.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
One more election, got many more coming.
Correct. We'll have a little bit of a reprieve until September, and then again in November, so we're having a really good time.
Sarah, before you walk away, could you just explain why someone is running for a one-year term for library trustees and a three-year term?
So, you have two people that are running for three-year terms, which are the terms that should be up. There is a one-year term, 'cause that's an unexpired term. We had somebody who did not complete their three-year term. They resigned. The Select Board and the Board of Trustees appointed someone who was filling that spot until the next annual town election. She has chosen to run for a three-year seat instead of the one-year seat, and so somebody will be fulfilling the rest of that term for the one year. This is in place so that you continue to have staggered terms there. It's a six-member board, two people are elected every year.
Yeah. That came up better.
Any other announcements or information you wanna pass on?
I do wanna say that I've had overwhelming help and support with getting through these two elections that are less than 30 days apart. We've sent out thousands of vote-by-mail ballots, and there are many Town Hall employees from Building Alder Green, my staff, Michelle Viera, people working evenings and weekends to help make sure that ballots get out as soon as possible, so people can vote by mail. We had lots of poll workers working, both early voting for the March election as well as Election Day. We've got amazing facilities who make sure that all of my precincts are set up. Amir and Jake and Bronson have all been helping, but everybody has offered us help, has come in nights, weekends. I had staff here on Valentine's Day helping us out, so it's absolutely a community effort, and I just couldn't be more thrilled at the help that I've received, and I think that's a really important piece that we need to keep, be mindful of.
I take it we're getting increasing in early voting and mail-in voting?
So, the early voting is a very, very small turnout. In March, we only had 231 people over a 46-hour period, but we sent out more than 4,000 ballots in March, and for the local election, I've sent out more than 3,200.
Wow.
The turnaround for March getting them back was maybe about 50%, and we had an overall turnout of about 25% of voters. We have 24,000 voters in Dartmouth, and lots of ways in which we can vote, so we are hoping to increase some of that turnout. I really hope that we have a good turnout in April, because these offices very much impact each of our residents directly, and historically, we don't have a great turnout for our local election. But maybe with the vote-by-mail, hopefully, that will, that will be helpful. And we have a really interesting ballot, we have lots of opposed races, which gives people a lot of choices. I know that lots of DCTV, as well as Dartmouth Week and so on, everybody has been covering all the different races, so it's a really exciting time. We like to see the civic engagement, and we hope that continues.
Amen to that. Anybody else? Wonderful.
Thank you so much for your time.
Moving on, Dartmouth Street Sheet update.
Yes, so Matt Dansrow, our Outreach Coordinator, and Amy DePietre, who are COA Director, are here to give you an update on the Community Services Outreach Team's effort. They have a street sheet that they'll explain, you've seen in the past, but they've updated it, and it's good to promote it and get the word out, so.
So, the, the street sheet is sort of a listing of mostly emergency sort of services that somebody can access in town. It's modeled after some of the street sheets of other big cities, with more of a Dartmouth-centric type of thing. Some major changes went through it this past time. We've reviewed it, because the way people access actually homelessness services has completely changed, with the way the homeless services are merging in the area. They've taken what's called coordinated entry, which is a one-point entry for somebody, and now there's only one point if you're all in greater Bristol County, including New Bedford, but not including Fall River, 'cause they don't like to play, but it's, you know, one of those things. So, that's been updated, that's, people are using that, like at the libraries, the fire stations, for quick emergency-type of services if you need them. Additionally, Peter came up with a QR code that can link directly to it on the website. I'm gonna work on something when I find a few minutes to make sort of a, maybe a index sort of card that will have the index, the QR code on it, plus how to contact me kind of directly if you're, you know, you run upon an encampment or something like that, you can hand those out, and that type of thing.
It's got great information.
It's got great information on it. Yeah, we also did the pit count in January, so that's the second year. The town has done the pit count, which is the point-in-time count, where they count homeless individuals in town, and the town this year had 25, which is about three times more than what's ever been, but you're gonna see it consistently around the area, that it's a much raised issue in a lot of areas. The entire Bristol County, not including Fall River and New Bedford, actually had 51, and Dartmouth was 25 of that. So, that includes Attleboro and Taunton. There might've been some miscounting there, but it just shows the kind of increase that's been going on, kind of the town between the two big cities type of thing.
I will add that, you know, Matt and Amy and the other members of the Community Services Outreach Team have done a phenomenal job performing outreach to these members of the community that are in need, and really going out to them, and working with them, and providing them with services. So, it's one of those, you know, added benefits to community members that people don't always think about in municipal government, but there's a great team out there doing a lot of hard work for these people in need, and it kind of flies below the radar. That's why I like to have them come out and present before the Select Board.
Thank you.
Saw them, saw them in action when the migrant families came in, and that everybody called us to do the right thing, and they've left the area, but what happened in the short period was nothing short of phenomenal.
Yeah.
And I, maybe it's inappropriate, but we are gonna meet next week, Heidi, regarding the, the.
Our Dart?
Dart funds, yeah.
That's April 9th.
April 9th, and we're gonna try to find some very specific programs that we can work on there, so. Great.
Alright, work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving along, Town Meeting Warrant Article Draft List.
Yes, so historically, what we do is we present the Select Board with a list of anticipated warrant articles for the spring town meeting warrant, then in a subsequent meeting, we'll have a draft warrant to review for the Select Board, and then at the final third meeting, you know, at the second meeting with the draft, we'll have departments like Planning and CPC come in to present their articles in person, in case the Select Board has specific questions, and also answer specific questions in that draft review. And then finally, on May 13th, Select Board meeting, you'll vote and sign on the warrant. So, plenty of time to review these things, but I like to go through the list, so you can be aware of what's going on, so I'll go through these quickly. Community Preservation Committee has six articles. Two are their usual housekeeping, administrative budget, and CPA reserves funding, but they've also are providing funding for the Dias Landing dinghy storage improvements, harbor dredging, design, and permitting, upon against it park, and Dias Landing master plan. Those three are matching grants. All those projects are grant-funded, but there's a match, and CPC is covering that match. Then they have a good Community Housing Production Plan contribution, and as well as a Cornell Pond Trail Development article. Then we have the usual housekeeping articles coming up next, which is appropriation from the Cemetery Sale of Lot Fund, establishing the maximum spending budget for revolving funds, acceptance of the Capital Planning Committee report, and funding for the Capital Planning Plan, appropriation for collective bargaining agreements, salaries and stipends for, of elected officials. This is really just the clerk's salary, because there are no salaries or stipends for elected officials, other than the town clerk.
Is that something new?
Really?
Yes.
I thought we got a raise.
Well, you doubled what you had previously.
Thank you. It's all we wanted to hear.
Then next is the Schedule A, the Budget Appropriation for FY '25. After that, Funding Sore and Septic Betterments. Then there's Enterprise Fund Funding Solid Waste, Water, Sore, DCTV, and Water Waste. After that, we'll have some changes to the Schedule E. As you'll recall, this is just the hourly rates for our part-time employees. There's been some changes to those, or proposed changes. Personnel Bylaw Amendments. And then after that, as you've heard, as part of the, this year's long-term capital planning, there's the establishment of a Long-Term Capital Planning Stabilization Fund. If that's approved, the next article is an appropriation to the Long-Term Capital Stabilization Fund. Then after that, there's a few planning zoning bylaw updates. One is minimum lot area, one is frontage, the next is percentage of lot covered, and the next is setbacks, and, and the final one is accessory dwelling units.
It's at 2:00, Chris. She's gone.
They're very punctual, they're always running at 1:00, right around 6:50. Then there's, after that, there's an update to the Conservation Bylaws that'll be presented, and then there's eight Town Charter Change Articles. Ms. Brooks went through those at the last meeting, but.
Well, that's impressive.
The committee's been working very hard to present some amendments. And then there was, Article 38 will be extending lease terms of town property. Subsequent to the McBretney property lease being extended for 30 years, the Board had requested that it have the option through town meeting to enter into leases on the other leased properties that it has for up to 30 years. Then there is a Buzzards Bay Coalition working with the DPW, a land acquisition funding grant for the Pasqueh Mansett River Aquifer. And then last is a resident petition article for a retail beer and wine license. So, that's what we're looking at right now, and then there may be one or two special town meeting articles just for funding of small amounts under DPW, so. I don't have those specifically yet, but we may have those for a subsequent meeting.
Just have one question. I know that, let me see, we're meeting with Planning Board, are they meeting with us?
So, I have, in my notes, April 22nd, the Planning Board, the Planning Director will be here to present the zoning bylaw amendments, and we're trying to get the CPC buddy in that same night.
Okay.
As well as the petitioner for the article, and the conservation agent to explain the bylaw update. And that's where we hope to have a full draft somewhat.
Okay.
Would there be any benefit to having, asking to have the entire Planning Board here for that?
I, I think, I think the articles are housekeep, mostly housekeeping, there's nothing substantive, so if, if there was, I would say maybe that, but if you would like, I can.
Well, I would, I would, not seeing the articles yet, but I would say that if they, if they turn out to be more substantive, but we haven't had them in here, like, a long time.
No.
Maybe that's necessary.
For this one?
No.
Maybe another, for this?
Maybe some other time.
But I do, I do think it makes sense for us to meet with these various boards.
When you have specific items.
Okay.
Also, is there, do you want me to have the folks from the charter review at that meeting as well, or at a different meeting?
It's up to you.
That's a lot of people that night.
Well, I think the, the Planning Board, they'll go pretty quick.
Okay.
So, it's probably a good idea.
Okay, then I'll ask them.
I mean, you're, the charter review will be the longest, so I think it will be done in about 15, 20 minutes with the others.
This'll be a shorter meeting, so we make up for that one, the longer ones, so they average them out.
Yeah. Okay, I'll let them know.
Any other questions?
Motion to accept the town.
One quick question?
You don't have to vote on it, it's just an update.
We don't have to do that?
I assume that one of the articles to be added may be regarding the police station, Ron, this?
Yes. So, and Chris Vitale's here for the next.
Well, I know that, but that'll, could be, hopefully, it will be an article included.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I have it on my list, I didn't include it here.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions on this? Okay, we, so no votes necessary?
No.
Okay, moving on. Update on Police Station Appraisal.
So, in your packet, I just wrote up a brief memo as to our progress to date with regards to the Police Station appraisal, so I know we were here at the last meeting talking about it, but this memo kind of just breaks out where we are to date. So, February 6th, we were notified that Tsukiduchi was gonna be the Historical Commission Representative, and, you know, as we've talked about in previous meetings, we decided to contract with Real Worth Appraisal and Consulting. This was the firm who did the previous appraisal on the police station, because we are trying to get this as a warrant article on the upcoming town meeting. We thought that this would be the most expeditious process. So, with that, we did contract with them on March 4th, and we had them, or going to have them do a couple of different market values on the property based on a couple of different scenarios. As we've talked about, whether or not we want to do it based off of the current zoning, or if, you know, in fact, there's value there in rezoning for multifamily. So, that's both the footprint that was previously listed, or previously appraised at, which include that back parking area behind the building. We're also having it, him look at, just doing that front building area, so either way, we'd have to subdivide the property, so this'll just help us really determine where the value is for the town. So, you know, with that, you know, really how we envision the next couple of months going is now that we have that contract in place, the idea is after this evening, we will be reaching out to both the Historical Commission, and getting some firm timelines from the appraisal company as to when they're gonna be going out and doing these various appraisal activities. So, part of that includes a site inspection, so just because the last time he was out here doing the appraisal, unfortunately, they weren't able to do a comprehensive walk through the building. So, this is something where our vision is, both us from the Town Administrator's Office, as well as the Historical Commission, will be involved in any of the site walkthroughs that occur, discussing any of the findings that occur, as Sean mentioned, working with our counsel on the draft language for the warrant, being involved in that process, and ultimately, when we give back that final report, you know, we would come draft a recommendation letter to bring back to the Select Board for review and discussion. So, that's how we kind of envision the next couple of months going with regards to the project, you know, but certainly, any additional questions or anything I can answer for you, happy to do so.
And if I might add one item of note, so the appraiser is very busy, so the soonest, Chris really had to push him to commit to a firm date of May 28th, so that is after the Select Board is going to approve the warrant, so what we'd have to do is have the language in the warrant without the dollar amount, and we'd have to make an amendment at town meeting, just because we couldn't, we couldn't get anybody to commit any sooner with that information.
That's what it is.
So, the one question I have is, we received a packet, and I'm not sure if this packet was mailed on behalf of the Historic Commission, or from Mr. Silvera, Gavors Silvera, Silvera, but Tsukiduchi had reached out to a company called Terra Tech, and I'm not sure if you have that information from them. Did you get this? To look at the, I guess, inside of the building.
Oh, this was an air quality assessment.
Air quality assessment.
Where, the appraisers just looking at it as, for, appraising the property for sale.
For sale.
So, it's not really not an air quality or.
So, I'm not sure why.
Structural quality.
Why Historic, I guess, entered into this. I don't know what they're doing. Do you know?
I don't know if the Historic Commission is, or just people, they kind of overlap.
This was to Sue, yeah, so. This was to Sue, yeah, so I'm not sure.
I mean, the Historical Commission unless...
From December 2023, I just don't know.
Was not funded by the town for that, so I'm not...
No, it doesn't look like anyone signed it. This is the contract.
As I remember it, they, they found, they, meaning I'm not sure, Sue and maybe others, found this firm who said that they would do whatever they said, the air quality appraisal, and then, and that was what she presented to us as one of the possibilities. And then we determined to, to do this town article.
Right.
Which, which really kind of leapfrogs that and moves it right into a different status.
I just don't, don't know where it all falls together.
On the other hand, they did have some, some information there that I'm sure we can share with the appraiser as well in terms of...
Yes, so I believe...
They had thoughts on options.
Yeah, I believe in previous correspondence, they had someone, I, I think they came and did a, like a walkthrough of the building at one point in time. When we meet with the appraiser, I'm happy to forward that walkthrough report so that they can look into it further and...
This one as well.
And that information as well, yeah, certainly.
I don't think there's any harm in passing that.
No, let them read it.
Yep. So we'll pass it on to them.
Absolutely.
I had one quick question. My understanding is that the, the DCTV building is, is part of that parcel, it's all one parcel?
That's correct, yes.
That would be some kind of, part of that subdivision?
Yeah, so ultimately, when we get the findings back, you know, we'll determine exactly how that property would need to be, or we'd want to have it subdivided. We'd have a better idea where the, like I said, where the value was, and at that point in time, you know, we'd also make the determination whether or not we would just sell it as the current zoning allows, or, you know, if it's beneficial to us to go through the rezoning process prior to sale.
And the antenna would be the same process as well, I take it?
As DCTV, yeah.
Yep, the, well, the, was it police antenna?
Staves.
Yeah, right, okay. So it's all going to be part of that package. Anybody else?
Do we have to vote on this?
Uh, no, it's just an update on the appraisal process and the timeline.
Good job.
Anybody who wants any other information or questions, they can contact you, I take it.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Okay. Freshly back from a week's vacation, we have a town administrator update.
Yeah, I have a few items. We've recently received six opioid settlement payments totaling two-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars, so, and we currently, prior to that, had a balance of two-eighty-five-seven-hundred-and-seventeen that we had in the opioid stabilization fund, so we'll currently have a total of five-hundred-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-two dollars in the opioid settlement stabilization fund. So, and I know the DART team is meeting out there, they're looking to spend all that money right away, but they had planned, previously at town meeting, eighty thousand dollars was approved.
Yep.
For items that are associated with the opioid settlement requirements, so, but it's just an update that the, there, the group is looking to do good things with the money that's been received, and then...
There's a lot of restrictions.
And the state has done a good job, I think, in making a number of restrictions, so the, the funding goes to good causes.
I don't, I don't, I've had a lot of requests myself personally about how, with that money, when we're going to spend it, how, and I, I think goes without saying that what we'd like most, in my personal opinion, would be that it goes directly to services, that we can help people directly as opposed to, the problem is, it's, the services are regional, so we're trying to do the best we can to get the help as quick as, is that fair to say?
Yep, Dolores and I attended a virtual Mass Municipal Opioid Abatement Conference last week, it was two different days, and we got a lot of information, and we are currently involved with the Bristol County Task Force, who is doing a survey, and I think everyone here may have gotten, you may have gotten the survey. Yeah, so we're just looking for more input, and Dartmouth will be an addendum to that information, and it'll give us an opportunity to know what's available in the county and how we can benefit from it.
But there is a hunger and a thirst to spend that money wisely and as quickly as we can.
Wisely.
Wisely, yeah.
Okay, and then, as I mentioned in the meeting, annual town meeting preparation goes on with warrant articles and the budget and capital, we should have that a lot finalized within the next few weeks. You met the new building commissioner tonight, but we also have a new building inspector starting on April 1st, so that's exciting to get this, the department back on track. And the Recreation Center Building Committee had its first meeting a few weeks ago, and they're meeting again this Thursday to review the submittals for the OPM RFQ. And that's all I have.
Okay, can we move on to old business?
Yep. Bliss Corner, no new updates, same with Lake Nokachoke Municipal Broadband, no new updates, other than Mr. Reposo's resignation, and Mass DB Title V amendments, no new updates there.
Any comments on that? Okay. We have minutes to approve, February 26th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
As submitted.
Found one typo, but insignificant.
Okay.
Okay, you got a second on that, Lee? Stanley?
Stanley.
Okay, thank you. Been here. Okay. Any comments or questions? Will we vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I hear none. Minutes are approved, February 26th. Select board member updates, any comments?
I have nothing.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Mickelson? Ms. Brooks?
Nope. The shortest meeting ever.
It is, it is speechless.
Speechless.
Not over yet.
It's not over yet.
David hasn't said anything yet.
No, I, I don't, I can't say that I have, I, I, I don't have much to say myself.
Oh, good.
Oh, my God.
Really?
Not today.
Wow.
Been rate this down.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, huh?
Any comments on that motion? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This meeting of Feb, of March 25th is adjourned. Thank you very much.